Okay, thank you.
Guys, have a good evening.
Thank you, you too. All right, Nick's here. Thanks, Nick, for starting the recording. We'll start the meeting. I've got 7:04 on my computer. First and foremost, I want to welcome Mac Stucko to the planning board. Mac, we've had the opportunity to see you and interact in the past. Would you like to take a minute just to talk about your ideas about coming to the planning board and a little bit about yourself?
Um, I've, my family moved here about thirteen, fourteen years ago. And uh, I slowly moved here. I was working as a planner for KB cog. And uh, so I interacted with town government back then and then um, had family obligations that kind of kept me from volunteering with the town for years. And uh, situations changed now, so started off with the appeals board last year or a couple of years ago. And that worked out and so um, they said there was a position open on the planning board, which I know is a much bigger commitment. I do not take it lightly. I know you guys put a lot of effort into this, so I wanted to make sure that I was able to make that commitment and um, I think I can, so.
Great. Well, thank you very much, Mac, in advance for your time and commitment and welcome aboard. I know I, for one, look forward to hearing from you as a planner, your perspective on things as we go through different things. So I appreciate your willingness to jump on board here. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Alrighty, um, so that's, so that's one thing. Um, another thing I want to make sure to talk about, first of all, tonight, I apologize to everybody about the agenda. There was some back and forth. It was looking a little long. I made one possible recommendation to toss one item. It hadn't been confirmed, then we, that did get jettisoned and then we revisited the agenda a little bit more and really pointed at the right one, which should not have been part of the agenda. So as a result, I think we learned a couple of things. And that is, anything that's going to be on the agenda should be into Nick's hands by the Thursday before the meeting, right? Not, not two days before. Um, so that's, that's that thing. And um, and uh, and also number two, I guess, we have one thing tonight is that, as I understand it, the commercial review application that Adam is here for. So Adam, you're here, welcome. We'll be going through some details. I know you've been through this before. And bear with us as we ask questions and go through things and all that, so. So Gary, I can see that you've joined us. You hear us, Gary? Possibly.
It looks like he's having some issues with audio.
Okay.
Rich is back.
And Rich is back, which is great. Um, first of all, does everybody have the the commercial development review ordinance permit application that was sent out? If you can't speak, at least do a thumbs up. So you, I have it. George has it. Mac has it.
I have it.
Craig has it and Rich gave a thumbs up. He has it. And I think Adam probably has his copy in front of him, right?
Yes.
Great. So let's go through this uh, this application, shall we? And board members, help, help guide me along the way as to the things we're gonna do, do to make sure we're efficient.
Peter, do you have the checklist that Nick forwarded to all of us by email?
Standby. I may, because I have, I don't throw any email out.
I'll be right back, guys. Gary's calling.
Okay. And hang on, I got something from Nick. Hang on. So. I don't know if I do. I'm looking in one email account. It might be another one. I'm not sure. George, what, what date did he send that?
Yesterday, maybe.
Okay. I don't have it there. Nick, okay. Okay, George, do you have it written for you?
I do, actually. I certainly could uh, read it as we go down.
Yeah, if you don't mind, yeah.
So for everybody's benefit, and Mac, do you have it by chance?
I do.
Okay, good. So, because um, so anyway, the three options for each application submission is that it's complete, not applicable, or we've received a waiver request and, and we're granting that waiver. Not receive a waiver request for anything, to the best of my knowledge, so we don't have to worry about that far right-hand column or the middle column, I guess it is. So the first application submission is the application form itself as to whether that's complete or not. Obviously, it's applicable.
Right, um.
I guess in the way of background, too, we should mention that this is the preliminary step and that once and only once we have a complete application, then um, people in the area that live within 500 feet are notified by the town and at the second meeting, they're invited to attend if they so wish.
Right. It's a very good point. Thank you for bringing that up now, at this stage. So are we at, so going through the checklist, the first item is to say, do we have the, the application that's complete in front of us, correct?
Right.
So, so is there interest in reviewing the application in greater detail to, to determine if it's, if it's, you can say it's applicable or not? I mean, I'm thinking.
I've looked at it, um, you know, the vast majority, the, if questions have been answered, there are some about a half a dozen or so that the answers are incomplete.
Right. And typically, when we've done, gone through this, when we've run across specific things within the application where answers are either incomplete or, or we would have questions, we would be able to point to those things and consult with the applicant and say, the, this, this is where we need more information before we could consider this thing actually complete. So my view of this so far would be that, you know, the first goes up to like page thirty before it all goes to um, stuff that's not applicable in this particular case. I'm seeing stuff that's all, that's filled out. I would say it's applicable and go on to the next item.
So we'll, we'll circle back to that. Well, a question in the process, who's taking, is Nick taking notes on it? An original of the checklist?
Yeah, I'm gonna follow you guys along and make the notes and mark what's missing and what's complete and stuff like that.
Okay. Okay, so, so thank you, Nick. We appreciate your note-taking as we eventually do that.
So the second item is applicant's agent authorization letter, and that's not applicable because Adam's obviously representing himself.
I would agree.
Then the net item after that is a copy of the deed, option, sales agreement, lease or other documentation of title, right, or interest.
There's a copy of the deed in there.
Right, but you're leasing that, right?
Right. I have a copy of the lease right here, but I don't really see the need to put it out there for everyone to see how long the lease is for and everything. Get your copy and delete, you know, the information on it. But there's a lease pending on the permit actually going through. If the permit doesn't go through, the lease is no good.
The, uh, that's a requirement of the ordinance that we have a copy of a lease and the lease has to be for ten years.
Yeah, it is for ten years. I think two, five consecutive terms.
So I guess that's a, wait till we get it, item, Peter.
Is your question, that, that's a point that we would have to have that? Because there is a submission requirement. We don't have that at this point, so that's.
Right, we don't have it, so.
Right.
Um, then the next item is a written waiver request, not, not applicable, because unless somebody knows differently, or Adam can correct me. I don't believe there was one.
No, there isn't.
Then there's a whole series of, then there, there's, you know, the various maps. So the first was tax map. That was provided, so that's complete.
Okay.
Next item was a copy of the Kennebec County soil map. That was provided, so that's complete. Copy of the USGS topographical map showing the property location. We, we have that, so that's complete.
That's complete.
The next item is copy of Belgrade Shorelands zoning map showing property location. We don't have that. I believe the pro, according to the application, the property is leased partially in the shoreline zone. Is that correct, Adam?
Yeah, it doesn't have any actually shore frontage, but it's in that 250 foot. I believe in the very end of that packet, it should be a picture of the town zoning map with the property located on it printed. Black and white doesn't come up very well. Just, it's the ones who walk in the town office to the left before I get to Gary's office, um, on that right-hand side. But there's no shoreline zoning map on the Belgrade website to pull off to print out, other than that, when I took a picture of when I was in there, I don't know, maybe two, three weeks ago.
I don't, I don't have a copy of that in my packet.
Yeah.
Should have been the very back. I can get another one, but it's one of those that, you know, typically if we're sitting in there like it used to be, we could show you exactly where it is on there, because it's not a published map on the website. Most of the stuff you can find that way. But I mean, if you want to go down there and take a picture of it and submit it to you, I can.
Hang on, so, so I'm, I'm on um, the application, Adam, and I'm at the back of it somewhere and.
They scan it and give it to you, they have to give you paper copies. So I dropped off all paper copies.
Something to just give to Gary?
Yeah, you got about 300 copies of paper, because I asked before I dropped it off if they wanted it scanned and they said, no, they want it in paper. So there's a stack of paper about that thick in the town office with all the info. So if something wasn't scanned, then it's unfortunately, because this is essentially what was, if it can even show on there. Hard to see with the computer, but that's the one from the town office that was in the back of that, printed as a black and white. It's a small, small picture.
So Adam, um, I'm on the page after the page that says map unit legend. And then I'm looking at something that looks kind, I think, like what you're talking about.
Yeah, that's what that is.
It's like.
Which has the shoreline zone on there, which is, you know, it covers the entire village, so obviously we're in the shoreline zone. But it printed in like a black and white and then they scanned and sent everything that way. But I can get a better colored coffee and scan it and email it. That's gonna make everyone happy.
So hang on. So planning board members, do you see, the thing I was looking at is, I think it's, it's page forty-two or fifty-one?
Does it look like there's a half piece of a lobster on the right, up, left, right-hand side?
Yep.
Is that a floodplain map?
That's the.
But that's not the zoning map.
That says map legend land use district zonings, root areas. Says shoreline zone.
Certainly doesn't show the show, or at least the.
My picture, it's blue. And yours is probably gray. But either way, I can get you one if you want to, if you want to tang in at the town office. So you say, it's just, it's not a map that I can actually pull offline and print.
I would say let's go that way, because if we're not clear here, which is, then should there ever be a, another examination of the application made up at that, too, so.
It says, it says copy of shoreline zoning map showing property location, so I would say you would want to blow up that picture and clearly delineate the property as it is on the shoreline zoning map.
We can, as best as it is, as long as it's made back in the eighties. Yeah, we'll zoom in on it and print it.
Peter, there's another way to skip this cat um, and accomplish this, and, which I think, at least for, speaking for myself, would be more useful is when we get to looking at what's on the site plan. One of the things that's required is where the shoreline zone is on the property. And that would be more useful because it shows where the zone, what's in, within the zone of the proposed, in this case, change of use. And partial develop redevelopment.
Okay. I can live with that.
So if we had, you know, Adam's uh, photo of the general area in the shoreline zone, but still had the site-specific designation of what part of the parcel is within the shoreline zone, because I doubt the whole thing is.
It's pretty close, yeah. I mean, according to that map, the whole village is in shoreline zone.
Oh, okay.
It goes all across that peninsula. Unfortunately, it's not. I mean, you can go to Google Maps and see if it's 500 feet across, which I don't, I think it's more than 500, but according to that map, it shows the entire village as shoreline zone.
All right, we need clarity there, I guess, bottom line.
Yeah, I'll get you a map. I'll have the building in it.
Okay, thanks.
It might show the entire property is actually in there. Um, I'll uh, zoom it in so you can see where it is.
I would also just make sure when you're at the town office that you're actually looking at the official shoreline zoning map. I'm looking at this map picture on my, that's part of the application. It doesn't appear to me to be the shoreline zoning map. I'm not sure what those dark areas would be on the shoreline zoning map.
Right, and I think to Mac's point was to, on whatever map we do see, you know, to point to as a, this lot, that's the one we're talking about.
Yeah.
Right?
Yep.
All set, move on?
Yes.
So the next item is a copy of the flood insurance map showing property. We have that. Uh, the next item is a copy of the national wetlands inventory map showing the property. We also have that.
Yep.
Then a copy of main geological survey, significant sand and gravel aquifer map showing the property. We also have that. The next item is a copy of the main drinking water program map of public drinking water supplies showing property location. I don't believe that's applicable, because that, I believe that applies when somebody's proposing to store gasoline, oil, has this material. If I'm wrong, so please correct me.
Yeah, I think that you are exactly correct, George, because that's not proposed at all here, correct, so.
Right, and Adam's not proposing any of that.
No.
The next item is a cap, a copy of the MDOT highway entrance or access permit. I assume one's not required, because it's an existing access points, but.
That's kind of what I went with. I looked it up, tried to find one, but it was already existing off of 27. I'm not adding anything else there. I went with not applicable, but obviously it's up to what you guys think on that.
I, I'll just note that I recall when the new town office was constructed, the town had received a letter from DOT in classifying, even though it was just an access to a, an existing access, but an access to a gravel pit, that that was considered by DOT an existing highway entrance. And didn't require a permit as a consequence.
Did not.
Right.
So to be, so to be clear with, with Adam, what would be, what are we asking of him for this one, then?
Well, I guess I'm suggesting that it's not applicable, because it's an existing longstanding, existing access point to the Route 27. I mean, I suppose we could ask Adam to, you know, verify that with DOT. But um, it seems, I mean, it's been that way as long as I've lived in town for.
George is right.
Yeah, I do, too, because, because you're not proposing greater activity necessarily, traffic activity at that, at this place, are you?
No.
So. I don't see how it would be applicable myself.
The next item is a copy of DOT traffic movement permit and traffic movement study. Again, I don't believe that's applicable. It's something DOT requires when they look at an access permit application.
Right. I would agree.
And then the next item is copies of the required, copies of other required state or local permits. None were provided. What, what I didn't know, and I guess this is a question for the rest of you and Gary in particular, whether because much of the building, the buildings in the shoreline zone, whether the alterations to the building requires a shoreline zoning permit.
So we would be determining that, you're saying, after we know where, what part of this is in shoreline zone or not? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
I would say the entire building's in shoreline zone. I mean, from the wall to the front side's 250 feet. The only thing's probably out of shoreline zones, like where the parking is.
I think you probably do need a shoreline zoning permit, as part of this.
Agreed.
Guess Gary can't hear me.
He must be on mute, too.
He is rich.
Can you hear me now?
I can't.
Yeah, my question, Gary, was, I had to my question, Gary, had to do with one, whether a shoreline zoning permit would be required of Adam for what he's proposing to do in the way of alterations to the building and elsewhere on the site, if that was the case. And um, I, I actually asked, I'm asking you partly because I wa, I wasn't certain that it might not be a permit just from you. Rather than the playing board.
So George, I don't know if it's gonna help, but I, because I'm not sure if Gary can hear us or anything, but I'm at least putting a question in the chat and it's being recorded, so we would have a document, a way to get back to it. It's a fair.
So you want to circle back to this?
Yes.
Wouldn't going for a commercial permit and knowing this is in the shoreline zone kind of be the same thing, because we'd be going back to the playing board for looking for a permit to do this and then you'd table it to say you need to get a commercial permit? I mean, isn't that what we're doing right now? The only thing would be like any of the state or local permits. I don't know of any state ones other than the fire marshal, which we'll get to at some point, which has been submitted. But I mean, we're going to the planning board to ask for a commercial permit that is in shoreline zone. Like I said, the line's like right at the end of the building. So technically, the parking's really nodding shoreline zone. It's really close, you know, maybe a couple of feet one way or the other. But I feel we're going for the same thing I'd go through right now to go to the planning board to get a permit for shoreline zone. I mean, it's, to me, it's all kind of wrapped into, into one of the same, same process, just this one's, you know, sixty or seventy some odd pages long.
My way of thinking, though, is that the shoreline zoning permit at, the shoreline zoning orders has different standards. You need to meet both of them. And the commercial development review ordinance doesn't address shoreline standards. At least not all of the issues.
We're not building something in the shoreline zone. We're taking a building that was built back in, in the eighties that has a, is set for a second floor. From probably went back to the permits back then, it's probably approved for the second floor and just never built. We're not adding another structure. All we're doing is putting in interior floor space. And the only reason I'm, I'm at the planning board is because I'm adding another business. If I was gonna put storage up there, I, I wouldn't have to be the planning board, because it's not a second business. The only reason we're mainly here, and correct me if I'm wrong, speaking with Gary, that because we're adding another venue, another business to an existing business, is why we're going to the planning board. We're not adding on to the building. All we're gonna do is facade the front, put a floor on the inside, which we could put a floor in there tomorrow and leave it for storage for the inside. And we wouldn't have to go through all this, because at that point, we're not changing the venue. You know, it's not like I'm going to the. You know, it's not like I'm going to the shoreline zone within two hundred and fifty feet on building a twelve hundred, thirteen hundred square foot building and putting in two shops. We're taking an existing building that's already there. We're not changing any runoff, we're not changing anything. The parking's already there. All we're asking for is to put in. Um, twenty feet of space for with the building that's already, all the ledges are in there, the door is already there at ground level and everything. I mean, it's, it's ready to go. It just was never built back in the eighties when they built this building. It's supposed to be both storage, uh, sorry, both showroom for Clark's back in the day when Tiger owned it.
Well, and that was one reason why I was asking Gary whether, you know, since it's internal modifications only was my understanding. I wasn't sure about the parking, whether you had to do more paving or something, but, um, the, uh, whether or not there was any permit required from him. The, and I, and I say that for, uh, one reason that the commercial development review ordinance requires. The playing board to make a finding that you've obtained all other state and local permits before we can issue this permit. So, um.
Right.
I, I guess we need to hear from Gary on that one, uh, but you, you said you're going to need to get a permit from the state fire marshal's office as well.
Probably because it's two different venues, um, where they have to be fire coded to our rating between both of them. Uh, so it's all been submitted. They have that application. There's a copy of one of the pages in there, just so you could see that it's been sent in. So working with them to get everything, all your ratings, all that stuff's been sent in, just waiting for them to come back and sign off on it. Been on the phone with them, uh, which is retail space. They said the biggest things was the, um. Exits, the fire extinguishers, and they really more care about having two hours of, um. A firewall on the both sides and ceiling and floor system of what I'm building.
Well, I, but. I'm sorry, Adam. I, I, I understand your frustration. It seems pretty simple, you know, from, from what you're saying, but I. I'd personally, I feel like it's pretty clear that you are in the shoreline zone. You do need a shoreline zoning permit. Um, it's just, that's how it is, you know, um. I, I, it's, it's frustrating, because I know what you're trying to do, and it's pretty simple and easy, you know, but. The, the regulation is there and, and we have to follow it, you know, it's, it's not like we can just say, well. We don't think it makes sense in this case, or the use is not. The, the use is so minimal that we don't really need to apply the ordinance. That's not how the ordinance works. The ordinance is there. It has to be applied, and if.
But it's all, it's all interior work other than siding, so one of those, I can go and renovate any place on the lake, shoreline zone. I can gut the entire place down, redo the inside. I don't need any permit but a plumbing permit. No difference here.
I, see, I think you are clearly in the shoreline zone.
But that doesn't require I always need a permit. If it's interior work, and I could ask Gary about that. I can go, I can remodel the entire house. I can put new roofs, new siding, new windows, do the inside of it, and I don't need a permit long as I'm under that fifty percent of value. Because that's all maintenance work. This is, and this is, or if it's interior work, if I went to your place and, you know, re-sheetrock the entire place in the shoreline zone, you wouldn't need a permit for that.
Right, I, so, uh, let, let me finish, I'm sorry. I understand, again, I, I understand you're really frustrated. What I would like to see is, and. I'm not, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to be obstinate, you know, I just. For, for me to make sure that everything is. It is correct, I would say that you need a shoreline zoning permit, and if you, if you don't think you need one. I would argue that you should have documentation in your application. Demonstrating why even though you are in the shoreline zone, this is why you do not need the permit. Absent that argument in your application. I don't know how we can just arbitrarily say you don't need a permit. I think you as the applicant need to make that case. In your application that says, yes, I'm in the shoreline zone, but this is why I do not need a shoreline zoning permit. And if it's there in your application, then it's clear in the application. There's no discussion or debate that's happening during the meeting that could then be confused in the future or misinterpreted in the future.
Well, I guess the question come down to is I have to find out exactly where that two hundred and fifty foot mark is. And whether it's on that. Twenty footer or not, so.
Well, there's also, it's not just the shoreline zone. There are different zones within the shoreline zone, right? There are different districts. What district are you in? What can you do in your district? I mean, it's, it's not just a shoreline zone. There are different requirements depending on what district you're in, and as an applicant, you, you're going to have to look into that.
So Mac, you're talking about the comprehensive plan, the, those, those districts?
Talking about the shoreline zone.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't think there's different zones for showing zoning up that I've heard of, but I'll, I'll look into it and I'll get you an application, or you'll have a survey showing. Whether I'm out of it or in it.
There are districts in the shoreline zone.
Right. I, I think, uh, Adam, that this could be, um. I'm guessing this might be resolved with just a note from Gary saying, uh. Confirming or, or not, they, uh, shoreline zoning permits required for the interior work you're proposing, and that you're not proposing any exterior work. Uh, I wasn't sure about the parking, whether that was in or out of the shoreline zone. That's why I say that. And secondly. Um, whether.
I guess it's going to.
Building permit suffered from that, and whether you've obtained that.
Right.
Okay. So, this is going to be more work with Gary and, um, a little more work, Adam, on this item, correct?
And I guess with regard to the state farm marshal's office, uh, you know, we can get that when. Hopefully you'll have that by the next meeting.
Depends how fast they send it through. Is it three or four weeks? So we'll see. I'll call them Tuesday and see what they made it with that. It's only two of them that send it through, and they're backed up like everybody.
Yeah. So the next item is the site development plan, uh, drawn to, drawing the scale. And on the checklist as well as in the ordinance, there's, uh, you know, a fairly lengthy list of the various components that are required to be, um. Illustrate, shown and located on that, on that, uh, drawing. And I just wanted to confirm with you, Adam, is this, is this your site plan?
Hmm, it's a location of the actual property itself, but we're not changing the actual building, so I submitted the actual plans from Hammond's, which is a twenty-four by thirty-six.
Yes.
Uh, correct, yeah, because we're dealing with the inside, and one of them. There's a second one that has like the signs on the outside and lists out some of the lighting, but like we're not moving driveways, roads, um. I mean, the parking is just going to be on the grass. It's already paved. I mean, most of that stuff is all what I would say. Some of it's applicable, but some of it is definitely not, because it's an existing building. We're looking at the inside that we're doing. So I mean, if there's anything on here that you feel needs to be on that set, or if you want to take that set from Hammond's and. Drop it on the survey, but like I said, we're, we're looking at the inside of the building. We're not looking at, you know, like when I built my shops, the outside, how everything looks and where the runoff is and. How are we going to deal with all that?
Peter, I would just note, um. That, um. There are a number of items required by the ordinance in the, uh, site development plan. Um, and, um. And even though maybe, uh. What's there is not being altered on, on the exterior. There's, uh, there are some alterations on the building that. Um. Need to be shown on the drawing. Uh, let me just list off the items I noticed were missing. If I could, oh. And, you know, some of them may not even be on the property. I just don't know, but, um, uh. Drainage structures, signs. Location of exterior lights. Uh, layout and dimensions of impervious surfaces. Parking. The driveways and the, I, access to the road are not shown on the drawing. Um, where the dumpster is going to go. Uh, where the shoreline zoning district is. Location of existing vegetation to be retained, which I believe in your application, you said you would. Location of the well, location of the subsurface wastewater disposal life, uh, system. Uh, those are the items I, I found, um, missing from the site drawing. Or the two site drawings.
I can get you that on there, but in my opinion, like the, the roads, the vegetation, there's no dumpster there. The driveways, the signs is already on one of the things. The exterior lights were listed out, um, on one of them. Um, I think it was actually on, one of the, ones was typed up, um. Yes, I need to show where the shoreline zone goes. Like I said, it's going to depend on what the town shows, if it shows the entire village, or if it shows a two hundred and fifty foot. And where it goes through that building, or if it's right in the end of that building. Um, like I said, it might be. I guess the question on that in the shoreline zone is if the town shows the entire property, but if I have a survey out there, it shows two hundred and fifty feet is. Twenty feet back from the end of that building, does that make, I don't have to file the permit? Because technically it's out of the two fifty.
The shoreline zone is the shoreline zone.
Based on the town map, uh?
If it's two hundred and fifty feet and it's two fifty-one, that part is not in the shoreline zone.
Right. I mean, it's, it's close, and on the Google maps, it's. Shows two fifty, twenty feet short of that building, where I just looked up right now, but yeah, there's a couple of things that walls me down the side. Uh, septic's been all designed, I have a copy of that, but when I talked to Gary, we decided not to pull a permit for that, because there's no point to. Spend the money to permit that until we have this permit.
Adam, I would think this survey from two thousand and fourteen, which is labeled, uh, that was done by Thayer Engineering, and that's labeled, uh. Partial boundary sketch might serve as a good base map for your site plan.
Right. And I was not changing anything on the site there, so I mean, drivers aren't changing, the parking, none of that's changing, so.
Yeah.
A picture that's submitted with suffice.
Yeah, we still need to know where it is and that it, and documentation that it's not changing.
True, I'll update that one and get it to you then.
Thank you, Adam.
Ready for the next item, Peter?
Yes.
Um. Let's see, documentation meets applicable state, federal air quality, uh, regulatory requirements. Um, I personally don't think that's applicable in this case.
I would agree. In the, in the past, in, in other, um, circumstances, um, we have had very few instances where. That one would actually apply, actually, that I can recall.
The next item is a soil erosion control plan. And Adam, um, I, I just had a question about what you're proposing that was unclear to me, um. It again goes to the parking, are, are you? Paving or adding any gravel fill or anything like that? I mean, right now it's just paved in a semicircle.
Right. Just going to.
Parking, but.
Right, kind of leave it as, as is, like the only thing I might redo would be a little bit where you call that entranceway, put some favors there, but that. Same semicircle is going to be retained, the septic is off to the right, so that's where the grass is, it doesn't have to get done. The only thing, and I did not submit a erosion control plan, um, but I can submit one with the. Septic in the well on the site plan, the only thing we do is dig one, ditch which one line from. The middle of the building up and around for the well. That'd be, the only thing we'd need erosion control for would be that one day to dig that up, and then to backfill it and. You know, hay it, and that one section that's grassed or as if it's in a gravel driveway. Um. But not planning to add any more paving, any parking other than parking, you know, would be on that grass or in that semicircle, like five or six spots.
Sounds like a paragraph saying exactly that would do it.
Okay, you got it.
Um. Main, uh, next item is a main DEP certified contractor name and number. I recall seeing that, um.
Yeah, me.
Dude, okay, that's why, that's why I saw.
Seven ninety-eight should be in there, if not, uh, Scott Horn would be doing the site.
No, it's in there, I just couldn't. So, blank for a moment. Uh, location of site structure listed on National Register of Historic Places, uh, we have that.
Correct.
Uh, we have, uh, it, uh, next is location of main historic preservation commission archaeological sites, and we also have that. Um, information needed to meet air quality standard. Um, that's probably in, uh, not applicable.
Oh, I would agree.
And, uh, anybody that disagrees with me, just speak up, okay? Don't, don't be shy. I. Um, I just did this in the course of my own personal review of the application. Next item is information needed to meet access to public street standard. I, I wasn't, uh, certain about that simply because the, um, site plan didn't show some of that information. I do know one thing, there's one of the standards in there is, uh, you can't have an access point on a state highway within a hundred feet of, uh. An, another road intersection and, and the hooland road's over a hundred and fifty feet away.
So units are already existing. I looked, I looked that up, I didn't find anything, and I figured where it was, an existing access to the public street. Technically it's got two accesses, um, that was like a N A, but, um, I can look more into it on that site plan.
Yeah, if, um. Let's see. There's two pages in the ordinance that come into play, uh, and.
Which page are you on, George?
Pardon?
Which page are you on?
Uh, I was going to say pages twenty to twenty-two, so if Adam could take a look at that. Um. There's quite a bit there, but a- again, you know, without the site plan, it was difficult for me at least. Um, to know. Which apply and, and if they were met.
I can look into it and add it to the, if need is twenty, I got it right here in front of me, twenty.
And I'm not. Why, I, I'm just saying I, I didn't know.
I guess the question whether it has anything in there if it's existing, asks the town ways. Seems like to me, kind of like I saw before, this is for, if we're adding a new entrance. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong. You know, it says on twenty-seven, you'd have to get a, uh, state DOT. Permit, which we already have two axes at twenty-seven. Permit, which we already have two axes at twenty-seven.
I tend to agree with you, Adam, that that. That section we were talking about. Seems to imply, and it could be missing something, that that applies to instances where you're adding new construction in an area. But I'm looking, I'm I'm looking, and and maybe Gary, you could help point us to the right thing. But if it's an already existing structure with an existing driveway, is there something that will be applicable in this case that we're overlooking?
I don't think there is. Can you hear me?
We can now, Gary, yep.
I don't, I don't. Think it's applicable.
Gary, you don't think like minimum site distances and and.
Be because it's, because it's an existing driveway?
You don't think applied just because, uh, since it's a change of use? Even if it's uh, has an existing, I I mean, I'm not saying he doesn't meet them, I'm just saying. That portion of the or asking whether that portion of the ordinance applies uh, to ensure that those types of. Numerical standards are met.
I mean, like, like you said, when we built the new town office, it wasn't applicable, even though it was just a driveway into a gravel path, right?
Uh, in terms of getting an. DOT, you're right.
Right. And a traffic movement permit's only when you're, when you have a hundred trips a day.
Right. But there's standards like for minimum site distance. But based on mile per hour speed limit, um, access. Yeah. You know, visual obstructions, um, that kind of thing.
I don't know if those apply. I where the driveway is existing and it's an existing special building.
I mean, I'm not sure that they do, uh, I'm not sure that they're problematic.
Right.
Your two questions here, does this section of the ordinance apply, and if it does, does Adam's proposal meet it? And those are two different questions.
Do we need to get a legal opinion?
Um, I don't know, I guess. I've I've voiced my, you know, what I thought, I I guess it depends on what the others think.
I would, I I. I kind of go back to the whole shoreline zoning thing, my assumption is. Everything applies. So, if if you don't think it applies, it's your responsibility as the applicant. To demonstrate why it doesn't apply. And so you need to make a case in your application for why it doesn't apply. So, you would say the standards don't apply because it's an existing. Driver, it it's an existing DOT permitted entrance way.
Yeah, it seems something like that would just be assumed that's an existing building, it's been, you know, driveway's been there since probably nineteen ten, nineteen twenty.
Right, but but my point is. Permit applications are not, you should not assume anything in a permit application. Everything has to be on paper, otherwise, ten years from now. Nobody's gonna know why this is happening, what why this is the way it is.
We're not building a building, we're not putting in a driveway, I mean, we're putting in a shop.
I I understand, you think, you think because what you're doing is minimal, I get that. The problem is. This ordinance applies because it's a change of use, so even though you think. And probably a lot of other people think the change of use is minimal. And really shouldn't have to deal with a lot of stuff it deals with, the fact is. It it does have to because it's a change of use and. Traffic, it is going to add a bathroom. You know, there are some changes, yes, minimal, but changes nonetheless, which. Need to meet these criteria, and if your argument is that they're so minimal. That they shouldn't have to meet their criteria, then you need to make that argument that they are so, the changes are so minimal. But you can't make that argument unless it's actually on paper demonstrating that here's my parking spaces.
Well, the easy, the easy answer would be is in the village, there's two other places that should have got permitted in the last couple of years. Uh, Lake Home Group and the three shops there that um. I mean, Craig's very familiar with this because he redid them, did they go through this whole process? Because that'd be the same thing with. You should be able to answer whether I need that permit or not, because those are the same kind of things, with a change of use. They should went through the same process and we should be able to say yes or no, because those had existing driveways that are there for a hundred years. It it's an easy yes or no, I mean, I know most people in the playing board have been there for a long time, well before these places were put into business.
I didn't hear the first example you gave.
Uh, like Lake Home Group, I mean. Ten, ten years ago, I used to lease and I went through this whole process, it was a little bit different back then, but. They put in a real estate and a rental company and a store there, well, that's change of use, they should have went through three of these. Um, meetings, like same thing we're having now, same thing with the building, um, I can't think of the guy's name, but Craig redid it, they got three shops in there. That's change of use, that was an antique store before, which was one store, now they're three stores that are in there. So, it should be an easy one to look back and say, okay, where's the permit for that, does it have this? I mean, Peter's been on here and you've been on here, George, long enough. You know, that you should know that they either went to this process and they have that permit. And you can say, yes, we need that, or yet no, it wasn't done, so. We're questioning on this one, I guess is my concern is, it seems to me it'd be an easy question. I usually deal with, you know, redoing houses in shoreline zone that are, you know, twenty to a hundred feet off the water, and I know most of us answers what I can and can't do. But this is something I feel the planning board should be, yes, you have to have that, because these two buildings, these two businesses that went in. You know, they had to go through the same, same thing I'm going through, and yes, we required it, or no, we didn't require it, and here's why, so it's existing.
Well, just speaking for myself, uh, um, I mean, I agree with you on the importance of being consistent and treating everybody the same. Uh, inequitably, um, though, to the best of my knowledge, neither of those two examples you gave. Um, got approval from the planning board, and I don't think either of them required approval, because they weren't actually, didn't meet the cha- uh, definition of change of use.
Residential house in the village to having three businesses in it, that's change of use, and the other one had one business in it. And it changed to another one, talking with Gary, the reason I'm here is because we're adding use to it. You know, when you have three different buildings in there, three different tenants, that's change of use.
I'm not that familiar with the first example, uh, I'll, I freely admit that. I mean, I remember when there used to be, um, Belgrade Boat used to be there and and there was a furniture store in there.
Right, and then it went to.
Uh, and then at one point, there was a um, a little cafe, so you know, I, see, it. It was a minor change, uh, really, almost no change, uh, basically retail to retail in that example. Storage facility to retail, and it's really clear in the ordinance that that is meets the dash definition of change of use. I understand, you know, your desire to be, I I mean, I agree, you should be treated the same way as anybody else, I I'm just saying. Uh, you know, I I, I mean, I, neither of those came to the planning board, so we never were asked for an opinion, but. Uh, if 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 I was asked my opinion, uh, I would have said, uh, particularly the one that Project Craig worked on. Uh, that was not a change of use, that was retail to retail. And generally with retailers, more traffic.
I would also like to say that, um. Based on my recollection, neither of those two examples came to the planning board, and we could go back to the records and look for them, but.
No, I know, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't go, because when we put in, um, it was the wine shops. We went through this, and then we went to put in a cafe, um, a wine bar, got permits for that. And then from there, when we let the lease go, it went to a residential rental for two or three years. And then it went back, um, then the real estate moved in.
Yeah, I don't doubt what you're saying at all, I mean, at all, I just don't remember. Them coming to the planning board for. That.
Right, well, no, it wasn't, so, that's fine, I will put it in writing, so you have something, I just say, I feel it's something that's. N A, but we will, we'll get it to you.
Thank you.
Before we move on, um, Gary, a question for you, did. Tick, um, I'm pretty confident about the second example, I, I don't know enough about the first example. Did anybody from that establishment come to you or an opinion?
Gary, if you're speaking, you're on mute.
I don't think they came at all.
Okay, so are we okay to move on?
Yeah, I mean, I'm good, I'll. Do a little more research on it and get something in writing where I don't feel why it's pertinent for this. And obviously, if it is, then I will supply something for it, but I think it's an existing entrance. But I will get something in writing to explain why I feel it's not needed.
Thank you.
Vaughn, Peter?
Yes, I think it's okay to do so.
Okay. Let's see, lost my place, oh, here we are, protection measures for historic and archaeological resources, I believe that's not applicable. Estimated quantities of flammable combustible and hazardous substances to be stored, handled, generated, et cetera, I believe that's not applicable.
I would agree.
Next item, evidence. Meets DEP, uh, citing regulations for oil storage and hazardous substance facilities, that's not applicable.
Read.
And the next item is copy of application provided to fire chief. By planning board or CEO.
So, I think that would be something we should mark that. I think when we consider it complete, we would then take that action, is that correct?
To be honest with you, I'm not a hundred percent certain.
You know, I'm thinking, hey, Gary, if we think about that one, because it seems like. We would want to share the information with the, with the chief. When we have a complete application, that, that would be my thinking, but.
So, I I think this goes hand in hand with uh, an item a little further down the list where. We need to have a written statement from the fire chief on the capacity of the fire department to provide adequate protection. Obviously, the fire chief can't do that unless they know what they're writing that letter about.
Okay.
So, if we get that letter. We got it, you know, we got both of them.
So, maybe I'm incorrect in that. We should supply the chief with the information, the intention of this idea that Adam's proposing. He could, he could then respond and say, we could or could not meet. Fire protection means for this particular thing.
Yeah, I would think this would be a no-brainer, but.
Saying to me that, uh, the sooner we provide that, the better off both we and. The applicant will be.
Right.
Actually, email, I talked to Dan McKenzie, and he said it wouldn't be a problem, but I didn't put anything in here, because it says the planning board is gonna send him a copy. So, I don't know exactly what you're gonna send him, but I can get a letter from him. Stating what we're gonna do, he can handle it, I have an email already, but to what extent, whether you wanna submit the permit as. Required in here, and then he can send a letter back to verify it, or I can get a letter and then, you know, you can submit the permit after.
Um, my thinking is, it's on us, as the planning board's responsibility, we will ship it to, um, Dan. So, Nick, could you please handle that, make sure that he gets this information?
Yep, I can do that.
And then, so. Asking him to respond to whether or not he would have capacity to service this. So then, Adam, he would respond that we would have that response as part of the checklist that George talked about.
Perfect. Other, uh, next item is other information needed to meet material storage standard, including bulk storage of combustible. Well, materials, um, I don't believe that's applicable. A visual impact assessment, um, this doesn't trigger that, uh, so that's not applicable.
Wrote one just in there, just as going back to like what Matt was saying before, is if he. Believe it's pertinent or not pertinent, put it in there, so there's one sentence or two sentences in that packet somewhere, just saying that. We're gonna redo the front of it, the building, so it looks nicer, that's the only I could really find on it, but there is a piece of paper in there for that.
Right. Great about that.
Yep.
Plan based on that actual visual impact assessment has more to do with if somebody. Well, for example, a wind tower or something on top of a ridge or right on the shore from, you know, somebody built the. The Taj Mahal on the shoreline of.
Paint it pink or something.
Yes.
Purple and yellow or whatever.
Next item is plan based on inland fish and wildlife critical areas program recommendations to mitigate impact, that's not applicable. Next item is other information needed to meet natural resource protection standard. That's not applicable. Too many deer yards in the middle of the village. The next. Yeah, the next item is, is board requiring post-development noise monitoring and reporting plan. I assume that's not applicable.
I would agree.
Would agree.
Information needed, this is sort of backwards, really, information needed to meet noise standard. That's not applicable, I don't believe. The next is exterior lighting plan and specifications for lighting fixtures. I believe in the application, you specify the, the wattage of the, um.
Yeah, I mean, just the exterior lights by the door and for the signs, but I can include that as well on the site plan.
Yeah, it, that is required, uh, but i- in the application, I think you specify how strong they are and that kind of thing.
Correct.
So, that's been completed, I believe. If I'm going too fast, please slow me down.
I have a, I have a question, and it's somewhat detailed, and I don't want to derail us at all. When we're talking about lighting. You know, this is a question for the board, I suppose, Adam, just wanted you to hear my question. You know, we have a unit that's used in the, in the ordinance. Talks about, says on page twenty-five, direct indirect illumination must not exceed point five foot candles upon a budding properties. Talks about, says on page twenty-five, direct, indirect illumination must not exceed point five foot candles upon a budding properties. So foot candles, I don't, I don't know how foot candles compares to what Adam supplied for information, because I think he's done. What he was intended, intending to do to supply information about the power of lighting. My question has to do with, how do we crosswalk these things?
What is your question again, Peter?
How do we crosswalk the information that the applicant has submitted to um, the relevant por- portion of the. Of the commercial review ordinance that talks about lighting fixtures on page twenty-five where it talks about in foot candles.
Yeah, so if he provides a lighting plan, it would have that.
And watts, this needs to get converted over, which is point zero zero one four nine six times a hundred. Whatever that comes out to.
Wow, you got that calculation down. I'm impressed. All right.
Uh, it's Google. It's got everything.
Okay.
But I can uh, convert that over. It's like point one four, so you just take off the two zeros. So it's like point one candle power. Um, for the watts. So I can put up, if you want to update that one, I can update that one for you.
It's, it's not exactly, it's not exactly that simple because different can. Different, like if you have an L E D light. The power that you put into that L E D light is going to produce a different amount of light. Than if you put it into an incandescent light. Was a measurement of the actual light that's on the ground. Wattage is a measurement of the power that goes into the light. But how that power is translated to actual light on the ground depends upon the actual. Light structure. So if you put in an incandescent light, that's completely different than if you put in an L E D light, which is completely different.
Yes, and uh, it's based off the hundred watts of the incandescent. So if I put in a L E D light, it'd just be toned down to be a hundred. Watts incandescent, so it'd be the same and, and thing. Well, I'll measure it spelled out on that site plan so you can see what. It's actually going to be, so you, you have a starting point for it.
Right, I mean, the whole, just so you understand, the whole point of a, of, of the lighting regulations is. That we want to preserve the night sky. So if everybody's just shining a bunch of lights up, up into the night sky and is shining bright lights everywhere, then. Nobody's going to be able to see stars at night, and that's a big part of living in a rural place like Belgrade. And so you can have lights. There's nothing wrong with having lights, but. The, the, the purpose is for you to know that. You should only have a sufficient light that you need and not more than that. So it's not, it's just thinking about it differently, thinking about. How much light is actually on the ground versus wattage? Because traditionally, all we've thought about is wattage and that's really got us in the problem we're in.
Was, is Peter, am I correct in, in saying that uh, rather than complete, we're going to get more information about this and we'll come back to it?
Yep, and, and Adam talked about how he was going to spell it out.
Yep. Um, the next item is, is board requiring post-development light monitoring and reporting plan. Sounds like we need to come back to that as well.
I, I would say no, that, my, my interpretation is. That would be for a large development that has lots of, you know, something like if Hammond number were being built today. A little thing like this, I would, I would not.
Yeah. That makes sense. So not applicable is what people think.
I, I can agree with that.
I can agree.
Um, the next item is uh, information to meet parking standard. Um, my assessment was that that's in the application. Uh, in terms of uh, traffic. Flow and well, I, in terms of square footage and, uh, and then, and the number of spaces being provided, which I. Believe is some to eight. But.
I think it's there.
But that aside, the information's been provided, whether it, it's adequate or not, it's a, a different follow-up question for next time.
The information has been provided.
Okay, we've already talked about the written statement from the fire chief. Uh, that's forthcoming, uh. Written statement from sheriff's department approving any proposed security measures. I believe that's not applicable.
Is, uh, I don't know how the town would be requiring it this time. Would the applicant be requiring it?
Well, just providing security cameras, um. Is, I believe your proposal, isn't it, Adam?
Correct, right. I'm not asking for any kind of sheriffs.
Isn't that the same thing as the fire chief? Like you have new development, you need to make sure that for health and welfare and safety of. People going to this development, there's adequate fire protection. Belgrade doesn't have a police department. We use a county sheriff. So for the health, safety and welfare of residents that are visiting this shop. You need to make sure that there's adequate. Safety.
I agree if there's asking for safety, but it says proposed security measures. It'd be like me asking to have a uh, ten o'clock and a two o'clock. Security sweep just to go through the parking lot, make sure, say, um. No one's going to steal whatever's out front, which shouldn't be anything anyways, but I see that as like, um, me asking them for a drive-through. You know, twice a night, um.
I guess if this were out in the middle of nowhere, I would question it more, but since it's in the village, pres- presumably. You know, sheriffs go through the village and there's lots of activity there, so I don't see it as applicable.
I mean, either way, if you want me to call them and get something in writing saying they could handle it if there's an emergency. Call there, but I think the, you know, fire department regardless is a break-in, um, which. Uh, I assume they could handle it, but um, let me know which way you want to proceed on that and I'll do either one.
Um, I, unfortunately, the ordinance is kind of vague, um, and I, I can just, I mean, it's one. Literally one, two sentences that apply to this and, and it doesn't help me much. Uh, the development must be designed to provide security consistent with the capacity and practices of the Kenneb- Kennebec County Sheriff. The applicant shall provide a written statement from the sheriff approving any proposed security measures. I mean, the implication is, are you going to rely on the sheriff as part of your security scheme or not?
No.
At least that's how I read it. I don't know, Ma- Mac, maybe you read it a little differently. I, I'm not sure.
I, I agree with that, that.
I agree with that too, and, and uh, since. This is part of the minutes now and Adam has stated quite unequivocally that he's not relying on, on the sheriff's. For any additional things, uh, security measures, then it's just another. Business in the, in, in the village. That's it.
Okay, so not app, continues to be not applicable, is that?
I would say so.
Other information of, other than the above, uh, to meet public safety and emergency standards, um. Frankly, there, I don't think there's anything else required, so I'm not sure. So I, that sounds like it's not applicable. Information to meet screening of structures, parking lots and other non-residential uses standard. Um, I, I didn't put anything there myself, just because again, without. I mean, I drove by and I, and, and I, I, you know, there, there's a little tree and the little cul-de-sac kind of thing. And then there's a couple of trees off to one side, off to the right, uh, larger trees, um. That are not going to be taken down or anything according to Adam's application, um. But um, without that being shown on the site plan, uh, I didn't know what to do. I didn't do anything with it. I mean, the, the screening requirement along the road, I believe is being met as is, um. First off, there's hardly any place to plant anything anyway, um, with the two entrances, but um, be. May recall for in the village, the, the standard is a shade tree every fifty feet. There's um. Two shade trees, one smaller, I think maybe the town planted that, I'm not sure, but.
I think so.
Well, I think, like you said, George, the question here isn't whether it meets the standard, it's whether it's on the site plan. It's not, so it's not complete.
Yeah, thank you for that reminder, Matt.
Yeah, very good.
I, I wander.
I'll just note in the existing vegetation on there, on the site plan.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Not a problem.
Thanks, Adam.
Next item is to scale profile view of proposed signs. I don't believe we have that.
Uh, there's a front shot with has like four black squares roughly on it. But I mean, that had, the signs have to be on the site plan anyways, that'll be updated.
Okay.
So if you want to mark that as a not complete and then see to the site plan, I'll make sure then. We do a site plan down, I'll have that site plan shooting a face shot going into us, so you can see it.
You would be easily put on here, I would think.
Right, uh, there is one that was made. I, I don't have a actual copy of all those pieces in front of me.
Yeah.
There's one that actually has it, which would be, what is left, here is right, that has the signs, like the Carter Marine signs, still be up top. Then there'd be, totally two other signs, ones to the left of the door and ones to the right of the door.
Okay.
I think it's on there.
Just make sure, Adam, that you put the lighting of the signs as part of that.
Yeah, I think in that one lighting thing, it showed the wattage, but I was converting over to the um. Candle power and label which ones is which one, which candle power. That would, that would be like pretty much the same.
Right, but I mean, like physically, where is the light located? Like, is the lamp above the sign, below the sign? That's what I meant. You know what I'm saying?
Signs with lights. Next item is other information to meet sign standard. Um, that's all part and parcel of the same thing, so that hasn't been met. Uh, item after that is a stormwater management plan. Which um. May have some disagreement about this, but um, I believe is required. The alterations, um. Meet the definition of development, development is the operative word in terms of triggering the stormwater. Managed, uh, the need for a stormwater management plan. Now, meeting that, just to jump ahead. Uh, I don't think it's going to be difficult in this particular case, but in terms of having something, we don't have anything.
A one page thirty-three, section teen B.
Right.
Okay, I just wanted to say it out loud so that Adam would know where we're go, where, where we are looking.
You know, it's helpful.
Cause the calculation is greater than seventy-five hundred square feet, is that correct?
Yeah.
Building itself? Or the driveway?
Uh, building and driveway and parking.
Not changing anything there.
No, I, I know, but just by virtue of um, this. Uh, the changes to the building, you trigger, you meet the definition of development in the ordinance and. And um. The um, and you have over seventy-five hundred square feet of impervious surface. Between the building, parking and driveway.
And I'm not touching all of that building area. So you're going to pretend to what I'm actually touching, which is twelve hundred square feet or so, plus or minus.
Yes, to me, that's a good question. Uh, if the building is already there and he's putting. Additional flooring or floor area inside the building. Does that trigger anything or is it only anything that he would do with the parking or. Yeah, I guess the parking f- area if that were to be changed in any way from what it is now.
Let me read the definition of development, maybe that'll help. Any man-made changes to improved or unimproved real estate. Including but not limited to buildings or other structures. Um, mining, dredging, filling, grading, paving, excavating or drilling operations. So I, I was interpreting, I, I, I was thinking that since there are uh, changes being made to the building. Albeit indoors.
Uh, so is it the size of the building or the, you know, if it's interior, there's no changes being made to the exterior of the building?
Right. But again, it, it doesn't say, it doesn't specify exterior.
Right, it just, it just says building, which would then.
Stirberry exceeds thirty thousand square feet in footprint. That's for state engineer, I guess. Yeah, it doesn't.
I don't think that's what, I, I don't think that applies here or comes close. It, it's really the seventy-five hundred square feet of impervious surface.
Right.
That I think is. Either it triggers that or it doesn't.
Right. Yeah, based on the definition that we're, that we have in our ordinance, I would tend to agree that it triggers. This meets development definition, even though it's interior. Um, for development with seventy-five hundred square feet, I think though, with any consolation. It would be pretty easy to. The stormwater management plan would be pretty, um. Uh, scaled down is the right word, um.
Well, it would not be unsimilar to the best management practices that we apply at Sherrland zoning. Applications, you know. Gravel drip edge, uh, infiltration trench or that kind of thing.
Right, but.
So we're actually asking him to disturb more land, more earth, more ground for interior development.
Um, I suppose you could look at it that way, Craig. The uh, way I would look at it is. We're bringing stormwater management and better water quality protection to an uh, to the project.
I could see if it was, you know, we're adding a huge roof line. We add maybe a little bit of an entrance there, but. You know, it's an existing building that the whole south side is already all crushed toned. Um, it's already, they dug out that whole side and put crushed stone in it, so that's already in. On the north side, I think it's just grass. I mean. With Craig, I can rip that up and dig down there, but literally that building sits. About anywhere from three to ten feet from the property line. So for me to do that, I'm going to have to either. Access permission or through the right of ways we have on that piece of property to achieve that. Um, they said, we're not adding on anything. We're doing the inside. I could see if we're doing, you know, ripping up the driveway and redoing all of that. And I definitely agree, you know, I could do a stormwater management, you know, just to make sure not changing the slopes and there's no runoff, but. I mean, other than putting the well in, digging a septic, which is a seven hundred fifty gallon tank and one H twenty. So it's eight by sixteen total.
I would gently think that, I, I've gone back to my earlier comment that. We really need to be looking at what. we really need to be looking at what is being changed on the ground. I, I may be wrong, but I don't see that we need to be making requirements based on some new area inside and existing, underneath an existing roof. That we need to look at what's being changed that would deal, that would change stormwater. And so we're need to be looking at how big is the parking area, the septic tank and whatever, that type of thing where ground is being disturbed. Like I said, I, you may not agree, but I just don't see how we require stormwater management based on some floor area being added under existing roof.
Yeah, it's a good point, Adam and Rich.
I was gonna say, Rich, in response to your comment, I would agree with you if the definition of the ordinance said expansion, but it doesn't, it just says change. So any made changes to a building, for example.
Yeah, it's very open.
Yeah, so you can, you can decipher that, whether it's change on the outside or the inside, I mean. I don't know, I'm not gonna argue.
I mean, the footprint area we're dealing with is 1,200 square feet, so that doesn't meet the 7,500, the building, yes, is 65 by 125 or 68 by 125 feet. Well, we're not touching most of that building, we're not touching, you know, the roof system, we're really not doing other than a small disturbance out front for a septic and the well and well line, I mean, if you wanna, when we do the Shoreland zone permit, if we have to have one, then we can put in their best management practices of what we disturb, that I agree with, but for me to go in and take a building that I'm probably using any of to add all kinds of crushed stone and drains and all this other work seems a little bit far fetched for what I'm going after here.
Adam, what's the back portion, the portion that you're not going to be converting to retail space, gonna be used?
It's still storage, it's still storage underneath it, I mean, all on, to the building, if you've ever been in, it's 18 foot to the actual, from the floor to the bottom of the truss is 18 feet tall. It looks really small from the road, but if you walked in that door from the road, you'd drop down 10 feet straight, so that's still gonna be stored, it's not changing, there's still boats and stuff can be under there. And the rest of the building is gonna still house the boats. So we're really not losing any storage space, all I'm doing is taking airspace and making it a little bit of retail space that was originally, this building was permitted for when they built it. That's what I have a hard time with is that, you know, back in the 80s when they did this, 88 or 87, whatever the year was, late 80s, you know, this was already permitted for this structure to have this retail space in there. This isn't, you know, new news, this is old news, I'm just going back to get a permit that when they built it, they just never, never did it, I mean, I, like we said before, I can go put a floor in there tomorrow and I don't need a permit, as long as I didn't put something else besides storage in there. So if I made a floor system in there and I use it for storage for X amount of years, say two or three years, and I decide I want to put it in a retail shop, I would just come to the town for a change of use, which if it was already, you know, storage, and I just did a change of use on there, I wouldn't have to go through as much of this stuff because I'd just be taking an existing footprint and converting it over, but I'm not going about it that way, I'm going about it with the idea of what we're actually gonna put in there.
If we decide that we're gonna, from this point on interpret this part of the ordinance to only apply when there's been exterior expansion to an existing structure that comes before us for a change of use. I'm obviously, we're waiving any opportunity to improve water quality at these changes of use.
No, not entirely, because if I, if I wanted to, I could go for a permit to put in 7,500 square feet of retail space in here, but I'm not going for that, I'm going for 1,200. So if I was putting in a whole second floor, which would be 7,500, and then, you know, went back for another 7,500 for the first floor and put in 15,000 feet of retail space, then yeah, I would agree, we should do some kind of stormwater, it makes sense at that point, but we're under the 7,500 and we're not constructing a building.
George, I don't know if you were able to finish your, your sentences.
Well, I, no, that's fine, I was basically done. Well, what I was gonna say is we, we need to be careful, I, I think the interpretation would have to, then also, we have to be careful of unintended consequences of that interpretation. One of which might be that we would be waiving any phosphorus control. The phosphorus runoff calculations or phosphorus control, because the way the two of those sections work is if you manage your stormwater, then in most small projects, you automatically meet the phosphorus control standards. But if you don't control your stormwater, then the more onerous phosphorus control section comes into play. So I'm just saying, we gotta be careful of unintended consequences of our interpretations here.
Right.
We may not be doing the applicant any favors.
Right. Easy, crew.
I mean, another I mean, you know, seeing how we're designing this as we go, which kind of frustrates me, the another way to skin this cat is to provide a buffer from all drainage areas, so the question for you, Adam, is how much of a I mean, that's pretty much grassland behind it, isn't it, rather than woods, if I recall correctly, how much is there until whatever drainage area comes up next, ounce gradient?
We don't know how much drop off is that, after that first 20 feet, or?
Yeah.
Do you have driveway on each side and this grass, you know, between the driveways and the actual building itself? I know the south side, the entire building's all crushed stone. Pretty sure the north side was not dug out, I think that's all just grass, it's probably 10 feet wide to, at least by the road, then it tapers down to, I don't know, maybe four feet on the lakeside. But it's a, that road actually is not part of the property, I think we own part of it, but most of that's the neighbors and everyone has a right of way through there and there's, you know, a turnaround on the backside.
I mean, one thing, you know, the more I think about this, I think Rich and the rest of you probably are correct, and I'm probably wrong, that the, if you look just at what's being changed or the, the, that meets the definition of development, it's not the whole building. It's the portion that Adam is proposing to alter on the inside, I mean, you, you know, setting aside for a moment, does the alteration have to be on the inside or the outside? Or both, or one or the other, or just on the outside, the I mean, see, part of my problem is this drawing is so unclear as to, I, I would really, to be honest with you, I didn't know what the hell you were proposing, Adam, from the drawings that committed. And, and so, for example, you know, looked to me like you're putting into retail spaces on the first floor. I had no idea the building dropped 10 feet because there's nothing to indicate that in the application. That and two bathrooms. Right, that's all I can tell from that.
Right, which is all that technically we're here about, we hear about, you know, retail space on the first floor, which technically depends which side of building you go into, the first floor or second floor, you know. But it has nothing to do with the storage space, anything below, there is really nothing to do with application other than it's storage area. I mean, I can.
Your entire square footage of alterations are 21 by, what's the width of this building, 68?
Yeah, 68.
That's not 7,500 square feet, is it?
No.
I guess we could make that.
14, probably a little bit less, it's probably just under that 20 feet.
I could buy into that, that that's the that more closely, that if you really parcel out the definition of development. The development we're approving is not the whole building, it is only this 21 by 68 feet. See, again, this was not clear because of the, of these drawings being imprecise.
I agree with George.
Application's imprecise.
I said, I have to agree with George, I really am looking at the application. I, it's, it's not that he's trying to, trying to hide anything, he's clearly not, but looking at the application, it's tough to figure out. I thought he was adding, at first I thought he was adding a, a second story to the building and it not knowing what, I had no idea what that building was like, so it wasn't till just a few minutes ago when he mentioned the 10 foot drop or whatever that I had any idea of what's happening.
Yeah, well, that's the same for me, I'm just slower on the pickup than you are, Rich.
No, I, I wasn't any faster.
Right, it's unfortunate, I'm trying to do this all myself without going to pay, you know, a licensed engineer surveyor to spend thousands of dollars to go try to get a permit that, you know, we've got in the past, it's a little more complicated than I've dealt with in the past, it's obviously changed since a couple of years ago. Since we've done it, but yeah, it's, I didn't feel, having, having the whole building on, there's anything that was pertinent information, because it's a interior floor system that we're putting there, that's why a lot of this stuff honestly is incomplete, because I don't see it all as applicable for what I'm actually putting in there, it's an existing building, existing driveway, I'm just putting in a floor system and two shops, but like I said, whatever you want to see, I'll make sure that you have for the next meeting.
Thanks, Adam, I, I really appreciate the willingness to, first of all, talk this out together, right? To illustrate what we don't know, because we, we don't know some of the things that you've shared with us tonight until you share them. So thank you very much for doing that, and I think it's helped us get, get a little bit clearer picture of what you're proposing to do. That's helpful. So getting back to the, the point at hand, George and Rich and other board members, if we are examining this application in, in a more refined fashion about, because we now have more information that we didn't have a little bit ago. To be talking about, like as Craig talked about and as Adam has talked about, interior only is what's being proposed, which that when you do the calculations does not meet the 7,500 square foot, are we talking about development as a defined thing that then triggers stormwater management requirement?
Yeah, I, I've come around to the opinion that this doesn't trigger the requirement, because we don't have the area that's, the square footage of development, that is the area that's being altered, albeit in, indoors is not, does not exceed or come close to 7,500 square feet, which is the trigger point.
Right, and because Adam, you said it was what, 20 by what?
20 by 68. And that's like outside framing, so the floor space would be a little bit less.
Yeah.
It's gonna make 1360-ish of actually usable floor space.
Yep, okay, so since we've talked about it this way, if we have a calculation that is, is well under the 7,500 square feet. I, I understand and I agree with what's been said, do the other board members feel similarly, I know George, you've expressed that. Rich, you've expressed that, Craig?
Yeah, sort of.
Mac, do you see where we're coming from on this and do you agree?
I agree, no, no requirement for stormwater management plan.
My apologies for having to think this out aloud.
No apologies, I, I agree with you, it's, it's, we're discussing the application, the details weren't clear and how they are, and so you know, it's like a pre-application meeting, right?
It, it, it really is, and it, Adam, thank you for your patience as we go through this.
No problem.
Um, so if the storm management plan is not required for this, what was the next item on the checklist?
The next item is other information to meet stormwater management standard, and that would also be not applicable then.
Agreed.
I'm, I'm sorry. Just because you don't need a plan doesn't mean you don't need to meet stormwater standards.
The stormwater standards would also be, in terms of mitigation measures, would be triggered also by having more than 7,500 square feet of impervious surface that's being developed, and we just concluded that that was not the case.
I thought that was for a plan.
There's two, but there are two kinds of plans, one that the applicant can do themselves or, you know, based on best management practices. And the other is if there's more than 30,000 square feet of disturbed surface, then it has to, the plan has to be done by a PE.
So is, is that what this one other information to meet stormwater management standard, the over 30,000 square feet, is that what that's referring to? Okay, all right. Sorry.
No problem. Hey, you're doing a heck of a lot better than I did on, on my first day. Way better. So next item, subsurface waste disposal site evaluation form, I assume that's not applicable, since there's an existing system that's gonna be used.
No, there's no existing, existing system, it's a new one that I have, the copies of those plans, but when I guarantee, I spoke, we said not to give it to him for a permit, do not pay for it unless this actually goes through, so if you want a copy of it, I can, but again, so it's been the $250 and finding out that for some reason I wasn't gonna get a, you know, commercial plan, then it just would have been, oh, you know, more of a expense out there, but I do have it sitting right here in front of me.
Yeah.
Copy to you.
Yeah, we do need that.
Yes.
Next item is other information to meet waste standards.
Is there any waste generation there? Like?
No.
Just normal household trash, right, or?
Correct, yeah, I was bringing it back, either to the dump or to my dumpsters.
There, there is something in the application discussing that, Peter.
Okay, good.
Next item is groundwater quality and quantity impact assessment. That's not applicable, in my opinion, this. The next item is copy of deed restrictions related to drinking water and groundwater protection. And I also, I, I concluded that that wasn't applicable. The nature of the project.
Agreed.
Next item is copy of main drinking water program, public water supply approval and source water protection plan, again, not applicable, this is a private drinking water supply. The item after that is copy of DEP stormwater management permit, that's not applicable, this didn't large enough to trigger it.
Right.
And um next item is phosphorus export control method. My assessment is that that's not applicable, but we may wish to discuss that. If others feel differently.
In my my opinion, it's not applicable.
Would either of you mind just sort of um elaborating a little bit as to why it's not applicable in this case?
Yeah, um, so uh the app bill, I'm on page thirty six, by the way. Appability, this section applies to uh non-residential development resulting in more than fifteen thousand square feet in footprint area of disturbed area or seventy five, that is not the case here. Or seventy five hundred square feet in um footprint of impervious surface, uh which is also not the case as we just concluded. Or the creation of new roads, driveways in excess of two hundred linear feet.
Perfect.
That's also.
Agreed. It it, I think it's just good to point to that every so often.
Yep.
Thanks, Mac, did you catch all that?
Can argue that. Other next items, other information to meet water quality standard. Uh, that has to do primarily with uh groundwater contamination. I mean, other than this wastewater, subsurface wastewater disposal system. So I thought not applicable.
I would agree.
Um, and then everything else on the checklist has to do with uh mining, um uh windmills.
Communication towers.
Yeah, all that stuff that does not apply here.
Yep.
Um, you know, overnight combinations, that kind of thing.
Okay. All right, great, so we have several items um that we've indicated that more information is needed, a lot of it has to, I think, starts um with that site plan, Adam, did you understand that all all of those things that we talked about tonight?
Yeah, I mean, it's all stuff, like I said, I have ninety eight percent of it sitting in front of me, some of it I just didn't submit because like the septic, like I said, to talk about, I have the fire chief stuff anyways, but you're gonna take care of that, the lighting's on there, just not quite to what needs to be, um, and the site plan I will update, like I said, I went after the existing building as doing interior space, not the exterior as my site plan, because that's what I'm actually doing, you know, not adding on to the front of it, not, you know, that little entranceway, not um, you know, building a whole new place, so I will update that and I'll have everything to you before next Thursday, I assume it'll be that following Thursday, we have another planning board meeting on the.
It'd be the uh, let's see.
Seventeenth?
Today's the third, so seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
Um, so so you know, I want to ask the board members too, that makes sense, we do it then or do we do it later than that? I only ask that because I know um, don't we, would we have Adams coming in again to go through the next phase, would we yeah, ha- basically have a notification going out to people and so on and give time for that to occur?
Do we notify people before we have a complete application?
Yeah, don't we have to determine that it's complete before we do anything?
Correct, we do. Right.
It seems to me that the stuff that we discussed tonight, we took uh two hours to get here, I don't think we, and I know we got other things on the agenda, but I don't think we need a whole bunch of time to take care of what is missing. Um, if it's submitted in in between or we have it before the next meeting, it shouldn't take too long.
Well, the only thing would be is if this requires, if I find this requires a shoreline zoning permit and you want that done beforehand, that won't happen for the next meeting, is that going to be like two separate meetings for that or one, because at some point in time, honestly, it's going to kill this entire project because I my now that it's a concern really to anyone other than myself, but um I only have a certain amount of window to get in there and put my floor system in, if not, then I lose a whole year. So I guess the question would be like the shoreline zoning permit, if I fill it all out, we're gonna go through an hour meeting um to go through all of that to see what we are and are not allowed to do to make sure you know we're conforming on that side of it, depending where we find out, obviously, I don't know that until I go to the town tomorrow, and then if it's close, then I'm gonna go to a surveyor and see what my two fifty is, and hopefully I'm out of it. Um, if not, I'm really close, um, you know, we're gonna have to do that process, then come back to submit the rest of this, or can we do it in one meeting?
I have a question that relates to um Adam's question, and if I could just ask that first before we answer your question, Adam.
Yeah.
This goes back to now that I understand what we're reviewing, um does it, I mean, the the it would be only the portion of the building that uh the alterations are being made to that uh is important here in determining whether it's in the shoreline zone, right?
Correct.
Are we in agreement on that?
Yes.
And, okay, so, okay, so, I mean, to be honest with you, when we talked about that earlier in the evening, I thought we were talking about was any portion of the entire building in the shoreline zone, I clearly had the wrong end of the stick. Um, the um okay, so I think, you know, I think Adam's right that, you know, sitting down with Gary and, I mean, I my guess cr- correct me if I'm wrong, Rich, but in not, if if this does require a shoreline zoning permit, it pro- more likely it's going to be a code enforcement officer permit, isn't it?
Um, I'm looking at the uh land uses table right now in front of me, it's a shoreline zoning ordinance, page twenty five. Commercial and a limited and and I assume that that's the limited commercial district.
Um, right.
Not a general development, uh it's a planning board permit.
Oh.
I I I'm like to make a proposal, I guess, I do think you know, I haven't looked in 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 detail at the shoreline zoning permit, but I'm pretty sure you need a permit from the planning board where you're located in the village, obviously, you're in the shoreline zone, I think, and you need a permit, but anyway. I I think all we need to do is determine whether it's a complete application. If you do everything else that we've talked about tonight, the only piece you're missing is the shoreline zoning, you you turn that in, we could review your shoreline zoning permit at the next meeting, assuming it's approved. Then the next item on the agenda will be, is the application complete? And then we go through that, and if it's complete, then you kill two birds with one stone. If the shoreline zoning is not complete, I mean, if if we don't approve the shoreline zoning or if the application is not complete, that's another story, but I totally understand you're sort of in a in a construction window here, and I I'd like to work with you, but at the same time, you understand that we have to, we have to do certain things before we can issue a permit.
Right, I wasn't asking for a permit tonight or next week by any means, I was just asking how many meetings
Right.
do you think we're gonna have, like, can we combine those two, because I don't know if I actually shared my screen, but on the Google Maps, literally two hundred forty nine feet from the closest point on Great Pond is about twenty feet from the end of that building. So it's gonna be so close that I think it's gonna require a surveyor on my side to come out and say, okay, here's my two fifty is, and then it's gonna be an argument with the town of, well, here's the shoreline zone maps, well, it shows the whole property, well, it might not be a hundred percent accurate, would be what my concern is, you know, if I can get a surveyor out there and show that we're close, we're out of that two fifty, then it cuts off one whole section that I don't have to apply for, but i- if I do have to apply for it, I will, but can we do all of that in the next meeting?
I
Just have everything prepared for it.
I I don't want you to get too lost in the whole two hundred fifty foot thing, because we, the municipality is allowed to create shoreline zoning, you know, where we where, like like Rich said earlier, the official shoreline zoning map in the town is the official shoreline zoning map.
It is.
So that's what you need to go by, I definitely think, I I I don't know about the other members, but I'm willing to do both applications at the next meeting, you know, not both application reviews, but shoreline zoning, actual review and issuance of a permit and determination of a complete commercial development ordinance.
I agree with that, we've done it before.
Yep, I'd agree with that too, I think it's a good solution.
And we, to be clear, we go back for a third meeting to notify the abutters? Or would be notified before the next meeting?
A third meeting.
Third.
That's what I would think.
No, I don't think we have any choice in the matter.
Right.
We were talking October first.
Is that the first Thursday?
Yeah.
I would say that's correct, Adam. So is that our plan to do that?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Let's aim for it, Nick, did you catch all that, so?
I'm I'm jotting it down right now.
Okay, great. Um. All right, great. Is there anything else for for us to discuss on the commercial development review application that we have before us tonight? Nothing, I think we're all kind of exhausted, right? Yeah, all right, all right, so so quick, quick review of the game plan, right, Adam, next time we we're gonna be looking at probably your shoreline zoning application. Providing that goes as as well as we think it would go, if it is approved and and then you're given it, then we could look at the completeness of the commercial development review application based on that um decision, as well as the other information you're going to be supplying, right?
Correct.
And if that goes well, we could say it is complete. And once it's determined determined complete, you go, you you would then be free to go for the night, and would be scheduling you for to come back on October first, whereupon we would have notified or abutters would have been notified about this, where we would go through the findings of fact process.
Okay.
Makes sense?
Yep, and you need everything by next Thursday, or this a week from tonight.
Yep.
Yep, you'll have it, do you want all paper copies and you want eight of them, or do you want one copy that they're gonna scan and send?
Nick, I would turn to you, what what do you, what what is required?
I I think in the current circumstances, Adam, you don't need to get eight copies, but if you give me like two or three, just if somebody wants the hard copy, that'd be great.
All right, three copies. Perfect.
So so did I, I kind of did a quick recap of what we're expecting, so we say, okay, we're gonna do this, this next time. We're hoping to make some decisions and that that would then allow you to go forward, if that's the case, and if so, on October first, we'll see you again. That's the quick and dirty on it, right?
Yep.
Okay, are we good, everybody?
Yes.
For this one, all right, thanks, thanks.
Thanks, Adam.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, Adam, you too.
Can I just ask a quick question about that application?
Sure.
On the first page, um, there's a box at the top, it says to be completed by town code enforcement officer. That's not filled out on my copy. Is that typically filled out or no?
I thi- I think that it is, I I wondered about, I, because I, I'm gonna go back.
I I have the original and I filled it out online, and since Adam gave me a copy before, gave me all those copies beforehand, so I didn't fill it out, if that makes sense, he gave me eight copies, I kept one for the original, I made that the permanent record. That makes sense, so you guys got hit seven copies, I don't have that.
Okay, because that's just part of the um, whether it's complete or not, has have the fees been paid and, you know, things like that.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
And that's good, you know, in terms of completeness and um records management, those, that's a fair question to ask, for sure. All right, um that was it for for uh agenda items that we had, other than the rev- minutes from August twentieth? Do people have the August twentieth minutes, hang on?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay, can we take just a few minutes to to review those and then um then we can go in and and if there are any any edits, suggest those, so just take a few minutes and I'll come back to you in a minute. All right, um, any edits or suggestions for the minutes from August twentieth?
The only significant one I have is that uh fourth line down on the actual discussion or whatever, it says Joneses, uh, I think that needs to be Lookzai or whoever, however you pronounce it.
So just take take off the apostrophe, you're saying?
No, change, well, Jones is not the applicant, the applicant is
Oh.
Brendan Gary Lookzai.
Gotcha, yeah, yeah, okay, Nick, did you catch that? Good point.
Yep, I got that.
Great. Thank you, Rich, um, Greg or George, anything?
Awesome.
Okay.
I have a couple of things, Peter.
Surely.
The first is um in terms of attendees, um Peter Sargent did join us, albeit late.
Late, yep.
So I I'm not quite sure the best way to handle that, but um but he did join join the meeting eventually.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that, you know, would account for why in the minutes further on uh he's not mentioned in terms of making motions or anything else.
Right.
Um, the uh, on the second line of the discussion of the uh shoreline zoning application, their old business. The, uh, on the second line of the discussion of the shoreline zoning application, their old business. I, I think, uh, well, actually the first line, um. Af- after it reads Chairman Rushton started the meeting by asking about, uh, contractor Jason Cody's. And rather than, there's an abbreviation, I assume, for license, I, I would eliminate that and insert DEP certified contractor number.
Yep.
And then, um, the next sentence and the next line, CEO Fuller stated that. He will have his DEP certification number. You may recall that we actually had an email from DEP to that effect. So I would, since that's kind of a critical point. I would add a line, add a sentence after a certification number. Uh, an email from DEP to this effect was provided. You get that, Nick?
You repeat that one more time, just to make sure I got it.
Were, uh, on the second line, uh, after, uh, stated that we will have his DEP certification number period. I'm suggesting that we add a sentence, uh, an email from DEP to this effect was provided.
I got it that time. Thank you.
And then I just have a minor, um. Minor typo, um, in the, uh, one, two, three, fourth paragraph, third line. DEP storm, I, I would, um, cross off water, uh, the S. Get DEP storm water best management practices. Rather than waters.
Very good. No, I have no additional, um, comments or suggested edits. Anything else from anybody? Okay, so hearing none, um, I would entertain a motion on the acceptance of these minutes.
Make a motion. We accept the minutes, uh, as amended.
I'll second.
And seconded. Any more discussion? We'll do a roll call vote. Mac, I can't call on you because you weren't present and can't vote on that one, but. From left to right, I, I see, uh, Craig.
Yes.
And Rich.
Yes.
And George.
Yes.
And Peter says yes, so that's four in favor and none opposed, no abstain. So. Passes, so thank you, Nick. All right, so that about wraps it up, uh, for tonight. We've gone a little over two hours. Thank you all for your, for your time. George, you wanted to say something?
Uh, I just wanted to ask, uh, if we could discuss the agenda for the coming meeting a little bit because. I think we have something of a log jam ahead of us here. Um, we have, uh, Adam's. Shoreland zoning application. We have his commercial development review application. We have, um, the subdivision ordinance rewrite on the agenda. So we have that at the moment. Uh, I had gotten an email, when, when the emails were flying about what the agenda was for tonight. I had gotten an email from Gary saying he postponed a couple of other applications for next meeting.
There's also the subdivision application.
Oh, right, yes. Thank you, Nick. Yes, and there's the subdivision application that we postponed from tonight. Uh, over on Route eight and eleven. Uh, which is more like a preliminary application, I guess, um, since it's not a lot of meat there, but, um, the, um. So, there's a lot.
Yeah, there is a lot.
So how, how are, you know, we should discuss how we wanna manage that.
Yeah.
I was probably gonna put Nick first, as always. The subdivision ordinance discussion. That work for everyone?
Well, I like that.
I was gonna put Nick from KV cog first. He usually takes up one hour, I think, to talk about that ordinance. That way he can do his thing and.
Okay, thank you, Nick. And so if we did that, then that would give us the second hour to, uh. To wish we're gonna clearly blow through that, um, aren't we, uh, to do that?
Did Gary say that the other applications were shoreline zone applications?
He didn't say, uh, I was wondering if one of them was the, uh, commercial development review, uh, from Gagney Cement. That he's been talking to us about.
Uh, we certainly, uh, if we get, if that's, I'm not sure we need another commercial development review ordinance on top of what we already. Have scheduled.
Yeah, we don't. It's too much.
And probably, you probably don't wanna. Put Nick Ashower onto the meeting beyond that. If we don't wanna do that, then I, I'm thinking that we probably don't want more than Nick. And with, uh, the projects tonight coming back. And if the subdivision one is on there, I'm, I'm not sure we wanna deal with more than that at next meeting.
Me, that's it. Nothing more.
Yeah, I mean, that, that'll be certainly two hours and probably be closer to three.
Yep. Yep.
Could we get back at a six o'clock? Start time?
Good, good question, Craig. I'd, I'd be happy to go to six if this, if your board, if this board would be willing to start at six. Are we good? Thumbs up on that?
Okay, for me.
Yep. Mac, you good with six?
Yeah, so is, is six o'clock just next meeting or is it moving forward? We start at six?
Good question. Um, how does the board feel? Because I'm, I'm willing to, to. Just start going forward, meeting at six, if that's easier for the wider audience.
But then we start nine at seven because, um, Karen or somebody. Wasn't able to be here. Nick had to cover. What's, what was all that about?
Yeah, I can't remember. I think you're on to the right track, though, with that, s- something. Someone couldn't, or something.
Was the question, why were we going back to seven?
Yes.
It's because, uh, if we, we start at six, but I think it's fine right now. Somebody has to work, uh, tonight. Cause somebody has to watch the meeting and watch the front desk. So, that's why. Eliminate one person, basically.
Because the office is open until seven?
Correct.
And we were gonna get a, a person, a deputy clerk to help us out, but. Nick, that has changed. Is that correct?
That has changed, yes. She, uh, she got, well, yes, today, tomorrow will be her last day.
Okay. So, so Nick. Maybe, um, help us out here with this. Is it in, in our best interest to? For the short term, say, we're gonna. Try and start at six? Can, can that work for you? I mean, you'd, you'd have to start the recording.
Right. I think next meeting at six will work fine. I would have talked to Anthony, see what he wants to do for covering. So if you wanna plan on next meeting to be at six, I don't think there'll be a huge problem with that. It just might be if we do that a regular thing, that's where it might be a problem, or at least until we get a new person.
Okay, so Mac, we have resource constraints elsewhere. I think it's probably not fair to chart out going forward. It's gonna start at six. That would be my take on this. I would advocate, we try to take this kinda slowly, one at a time. So with this board, if we schedule the next one to start at six, continue to check in with Anthony. And find out how we are with resources to help manage this.
I totally understand that. My only concern is advertising. You know, right now, everywhere is advertised planning board meets at seven. Like, if you go to the website. The town newsletter or whatever, it's, it's seven. So we change it to six. Then we'll have to change it back to seven. A week later. I think I prefer, I think. If we're gonna have a, a boatload of things to do, I think, I agree with Craig. Meeting at six totally makes sense, um. I, I just wish we could sort of formalize that so we can change all the. So, so if people wanna come, they don't come at seven, you know?
Understood, and, uh, it would be great to work to, towards that and I would be happy to do so. So, but we don't have cer- certain things under our control, right?
Well, if we change, for example, if next week we change, uh, next meeting we change to six P M, we still have to advertise it at six P M. And it will in advance. And if we change it again to seven or we're at whatever. The, the meeting after that, it's, I mean, we still have that legal obligation to, uh, provide public notice. Including the time of the meeting.
Yep.
I, I mean, what Mac's saying would just make it easier, but we have that obligation. Doesn't matter if we change it to midnight.
Right, I, I was thinking more in terms of sort of the semi-permanent advertising.
Right.
Of the town, because the town's already constrained staff-wise. Now we're asking the staff member to be modifying those things. Somehow keeping track of it on the sticky note somewhere, you know?
Yeah, yeah, you know.
What are your thoughts about that, Nick? Is that?
If, if you guys want, I can talk to Anthony tomorrow, see what he thinks. I can shoot you all an email. On what he, cause what's gonna happen, cause Anthony will probably be the end, end up being the person who stays and starts the meeting for you guys. Um, and he'll stay for that first hour, then I'll take over from there. So, if you want, I can check with him and if he says, yeah, let's go with six for the foreseeable future. Um, cause we have, I know next meeting's gonna be busy and meeting at that, I think it's gonna be another busy one. Um, I can do that if you want.
That sounds good to me.
And Nick, in terms of changing the, um, town website and the notice. Uh, how much of a burden is that for you?
Uh, you would have to, I, I do it sometimes now, but Anthony is still coming over. Um, so like I said, that's not asking him how.
Okay.
Burden from that is. I do do it sometimes, but he mostly, now he's the communication guy now, so.
Okay, great. Please, please check and, uh, we'll look forward to seeing your email. All right, any?
We'll definitely get one tomorrow, uh, tomorrow, definitely.
Thank you, Nick. Any other, um, uh, business that we have not yet, uh, talked about? Any town business that? Someone cares to bring up?
I, I have a, I have a question about. The subdivision ordinance that KV cog is helping us with.
Yes.
And there are multiple moratoriums right now. Is that right? Can you just sort of fill me in on where you are and, and what's going on?
The moratoriums.
So the moratoriums were approved by the, the plant, by the select board last week.
Okay, they still have to go to vote.
Right, it goes through a vote November third, but it's a moratorium so that we can do something.
And that was for the solar. Oh, wait, I, it was the moratorium just for solar?
Solar.
Commercial development review.
So, uh, commercial development review so that for, uh, but exclusively for wind turbines and telecommunications towers. And, um, along with the solar and then also subdivisions.
So we're doing, so the subdivision ordinance that, that KV cog is doing right now with you. Is, is he doing solar stuff?
They will be, yes, they, they'll be, um, we're. Um, so we're up to the point of looking, we've made it far enough through the subdivision ordinance rewrite. That we're to the performance standards and, um, we've been. Relying heavily on the model subdivision ordinance that Southern Maine Regional Planning Commission. Developed a number of years ago, along with the State Planning Office, which sounds like you probably are well aware of. Um, the, um, so that's one track. The other track is, um, to. Uh, add some more standards to the commercial development review ordinance. Specific to, um, windmills, um, as commercial wind farms, um. Uh, telecommunications towers and, uh, solar arrays. We have, you know, a- all those. Usually would trigger that ordinance, but standard specific to those types of development are, um. Um, so, some, there's some that are lacking or weak.
Right.
And also on the, um, subdivision moratorium, part of that's also due to the water quality issues with the salt. And, um, what the state and the town is also gonna be doing as far as. Um, taking care of that problem. And we don't wanna load up on a subdivision in that area. Without. Having an answer to the problem before we get it.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yes, we need to be be- better positioned to deal with, with incoming applications of those types. And this will allow us to do that.
That's for a hundred and eighty days. It's not very long.
Right. Okay. So I, and I'm just thinking, cause we're doing the subdivision now and then. Immediately after that, we're gonna do the commercial development as well, right?
Right.
There would be a modification there, yes.
So they are gonna be long meetings for the foreseeable future.
KV cog.
There will be.
Yeah. Guess the short answer is yes.
Okay.
And I guess it's probably clear to everybody that the subdivision that's already submitted an application, this obviously, um. You know, we would have to review under the existing or ordinance despite all its flaws.
Right.
Oh, right, right. Same with the commercial development, I mean.
Right, yes. Uh, and apparently, uh, a solar farm has been talking to Gary for a while now, uh, and another one, so.
Think I heard, uh. Think I heard that Portland was trying to. Uh, do something with their planning board to prepare for a proposal for solar array, I think, somewhere in Portland. I think I saw that on the news. So it's, it's not just Belgrade that's facing us, I guess, is part of my point. That other communities will be facing it, too.
Okay, I have another, it's not any business of the towns. Can I ask a question as well?
Yes, absolutely.
All right, there's a twenty-three foot right away beside a property. Going back to thirty acres. We're breaking off four acres. To sell with a house. There's a remaining of seventy-six, all right, let me explain this better. A budding property has a twenty-three foot right away going down to thirty acres. Aside that is eighty acres of land. Sell on four acres to go with a house. So seventy-six acres is being kept. If I was to sell twenty-three or twenty-seven feet. To the person with that right away, would that kick me into a subdivision? To the person with that right away, would that kick me into a subdivision?
Because it would be in, uh, would it be another parcel? Is that kind of the question?
Be doing a butter. And it'd be to expand their right of way.
Is it a right of way or are you?
It's a right of way.
Right, but are you selling the right of way or are you selling a separate parcel?
No, it'd be, well, whatever, how you wanna call it, it's selling it to them for, to expand their right of way.
Right, but it's, how you wanna call it would determine whether it's a subdivision. A right of way is not a subdivision, but a separate parcel is.
Well, I'm selling them land regardless, so how do you, so I sell them land for a right of way. I mean, they're gonna buy it, I'm not gonna give it to them.
No.
Why not?
While you're at it, I'm looking for some additional land too.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, the right of way presumably is connected to the parcel on the bottom that you want to sell them, right?
No, I'm not selling them anything on the bottom. They already have thirty acres back there. They have a twenty-three foot right of way, but going, but. Down someone's driveway, right next to the house that abuts my property.
And they want a wider right of way?
Correct. And do they need a wider right of way to do anything with their land down below?
To answer that last question, I'm not aware of any standards in Belgrade with regard to. You know, as, as long as they're not creating a subdivision.
Well, you never know, I mean.
Well. Then it depends, you know, are they gonna create a subdivision or not? If they're gonna create a subdivision, then there's road standards that they have to meet. Including width. Um, I, I don't know what those are off the top of my head, but, um. But if it's just gonna be a driveway or a private lane, I'm not aware of any standards. That they have to meet. Um, the fire department might not go back there, but.
Right.
And, and good luck getting an ambulance back there, but, um, you know, just like with camp roads, um.
Twenty-three feet's a normal width of road, but.
Not that narrow, but.
Anyways, to get back to my question, is it gonna kick me into a subdivision?
So let me, Craig, can you say that again? I need to draw this out.
Okay, far right of the property, a button my property. There's a twenty-three foot right of way for somebody else. They wanna buy another twenty-seven or whatever feet. Off me. Where I'm selling the house. With four acres. But I'm keeping seventy-six acres.
So right there, you're selling four acres, you have eighty acres. You're selling. Four acres with the house. And then seventy-six, so that's two, two parcels right there you're creating.
Correct.
Okay.
So, is selling extra land abutting to a butter. Who has a right of way to get down through there, gonna kick me into a subdivision? Doesn't land to in the butter not count?
I'd have to look at the law, I, I'm just.
Why? Okay, okay, so you're, you're, you're selling four acres and you have a right of way right now?
I don't have a right of way, no. The right of way's not mine.
Right, the right of way is to access land behind, right?
For somebody else, it's not mine, it's got nothing to do with me.
Right. But your a butter. Wants to buy. It to expand the right of way.
Correct.
But it's not, so, so you're not. Expanding the right of way, you're expanding their lot.
No, the right of way.
But you're s-. But once you sell them, the twenty-three feet, it's not a right of way through your property anymore. It's actually part of their.
Not through my property to start with. It's in a butter.
You're selling the twenty-three feet off of your property to that. Right of way person.
Correct.
Does, okay, okay, okay. The right of way is on a butter's land, correct? The a butter, so the a butter. Does not own the right of way.
I'm not sure.
Well, okay, I'm sorry. Who are you selling the twenty-three feet to? The right of way people or the a butter?
What's that?
Who, who are you selling the right, the twenty-three feet to? The right of way people or the a butter?
I can't answer that question, I guess, because I don't know if they own the land or if they just have the right of way.
But who, who, who wants to buy it? The people that, that have the right of way?
Yes.
Because if they don't own the land that the right of way is on. What?
They own twenty-three feet.
They don't own it, they have the right of way. Of twenty-three feet.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I, I have to research that further, I guess.
If they own, it, it, I would say, if they own, if the a butter owns that twenty-three feet. Then you are expanding it to the a butter and that would not be a subdivision. But if you're selling it to the right of way person, it's not, and they don't own the land underneath. That's not a butter's expansion, that's actually a whole new twenty-three foot strip. That would be the third that would kick you into subdivision.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. So if they own the right of way, then I could sell it. But if they don't, I can't.
Well, without going through subdivision plan. I mean, I, I'm a little bit confused because if they own the land. Then we shouldn't be calling it a right of way. Right? Isn't a right of way. Access on somebody else's land? Like if you own the land, it's not a right of way, it's just.
Your, it's yours.
On your land.
Right.
I mean.
Well, it goes down through someone's driveway to access their back land.
Right, but if it's the other person's driveway, that the right of way goes through. Then it's that person who owns the driveway that owns the land. Right?
Alright.
Mac, um, do you know, could Craig provide them or sell them? A right of way that just so happens, uh, but they're existing right of way. Over his land without creating this, uh, a third lot. The right of, is not a lot, right?
I don't see anything wrong with selling somebody a right of way. You're not selling them the land, you're just selling them a right of way.
Right.
That's not creating a subdivision.
Yeah, so, you know, forget the fact, Craig, that they already have a, either a right of way or. Their own land. I, it sounds like it must be a right of way, otherwise you wouldn't be at, they wouldn't be asking you this question, but, um, the, um. You could send, sell, sell them a right of way across your property that just happens to be the width that they desire. And it wouldn't be a lot.
Okay. That's potential, that's possible.
Yep.
Yeah.
Now, I just wanna make it clear, I'm not an attorney, okay?
But typically, you, you buy and sell land. But you're actually buying, in this case, you're buying and selling access. Not land, but access. Access is not a subdivision.
Okay.
Sounds good to me. I'm not an attorney either.
Uh, good questions, Craig. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for that conversation.
Yes, um. Any other town business to attend? If not, I, I suggest we call it a night, nine forty-four, nine forty-five.
Thank you for your patience, guys.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mac, for joining.
Board, Mac.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you, good night all.
Good night.